Tonight, I believe you are here because you love America.
Amen.
And I appreciate that. And I would take it that you're voters and you want to be informed voters.
Yes.
And we want to assist in that. So thank you for being here tonight. We're going to have a word of prayer and just to start the night off. And then we are going to say the pledge to the flag. We have a young lady that's going to help us with that. And we're excited about that. But let's, let's have a word of prayer just to start the night off. Would you bow your heads and pray with me, please? Father, thank you for America.
Amen.
We realize, Lord, you're the one that gave us this great country. Thank you for it, Lord. Would you bless tonight? Help us to honor you first of all. Lord, help us to be just. Help us to be a good testimony for you tonight, Lord. Thank you, Brother Adam. Let's put the night together. Brother Aaron Snodderly that's with us to moderate all the candidates, Lord. Thank you for them. And Lord, these are American citizens. Lord, would you make it special for every individual here? Let us be wiser and more informed when the night's over so we can vote the way you'd want us to. And we'll thank you in praise for what you do. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Would you please stand? We're going to have a pledge allegiance to the flag. We have a young lady here that's been working on it. She is going to help us with that. And good deal, Brother Anthony. I'm going to give you this microphone.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Amen. To remain standing, we're going to sing our national anthem. Thank you. National anthem, if you need it. It's in your hymn book there, right in the front, the seat right in front of you, in the red book there, page 584, the Star Spangled Banner. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bronze stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rockets, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? Thank you. Maybe see you.
Amen. By the way, it is Brother Anthony's birthday today. Happy birthday to him. And again, I'll say thank you so much for coming. We're honored to have you. I really believe you're here because you love America, and I appreciate that so very, very much. And we're honored as a church to host the candidates' night. And someone asked about it, and I said, well, we'll see how it goes tonight, whether we have it again or not, you know? And we're excited about it, looking forward to it. Brother Adam Miller has been the one that has been his vision and his dream to have the night. And he brought it to me, and I thought it was a wonderful idea. And I appreciate him doing all the legwork. Really, he's did all the work to make it happen tonight. And I appreciate him doing that. And he is very involved in politics. More Christians ought to be involved in politics. But I appreciate it. He's not doomsday. And he has hope. I like that. I appreciate us so very, very much. And I'm going to kind of just basically turn things over to him. He's going to introduce our candidates, our moderators and whatnot. But would you do this? He's did all the work for it tonight. So would you let him know how much you appreciate? Would you do that, Brother Miller? Would you?
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. We're glad that you're able to make it out. We have, I think we have four of our candidates that are, I don't think, is Morgan Woodbury here? Ah, she is here. Okay, good. So we have, we have three state candidates that we're going to start with. We have Mr. Mike Sparks is going to be coming up. We have Mr. Robert Stevens and Ms. Morgan Woodbury. They're going to be representing the state elections here. Mr. Sparks and Ms. Woodbury, I believe, are running against each other. And we're going to have the three of them come up and, and they're going to start us out. We have our moderator tonight is Aaron Snodderly. He is the director of the Tennessee Independent Baptist for Religious Liberties. I said that without even looking. How about that? And he, and he does a lot of work with elected officials in Nashville and his group. And we're so thankful that he's going to be moderating here for us tonight. We did ask everybody to submit questions. If anybody is still trying to get those in, that's okay. We can have somebody come by and pick them up to get those to Brother Snodderly as we get going. So at this time, we'll have Ms. Woodbury, Mr. Stevens, Mr. Sparks, if you guys can come on up here, and Brother Snodderly.
Hi, how are you all?
Hello.
Well, my name's Morgan Woodbury. Are you all having a good evening? Stay warm?
Yeah.
All right, I know that's right. Well, I'm happy to be here in front of you guys. I'm happy to introduce myself. So again, like you said, my name's Morgan Woodbury. I am running for state House Rep, District 49. And I just decided to do that because I felt like it was time for a change. It was time for there to be a bit of-
A different move. A bit of a different move, different wave, pushing especially our young people to get involved. I think a lot of my generation, things change, happens on social media. And I want to change that narrative. I want them to know that we're the ones getting married now. We're the ones working. We're the ones having family. And it is time for us to get involved. It's time for us to have, to have a voice and to make sure that we are affecting where our community and where our economy goes from here, because it's going to affect us now. So we'll get into it again. My name's Morgan Woodbury, and I'm happy to be here. Thank you all.
Can you hear me? I want to thank the pastor. I was here about, I guess it was, was
it six years ago that y'all hosted a forum similar to this? And I appreciate it. You know, we were talking earlier, Pastor, not many churches do this. And we need to do it. I know Frank LaRoe Baptist Church that I used to go to as a little boy, I grew up Catholic, and that little bus ministry used to come pick me up. And I appreciate that little bus ministry. And that may be why I'm in the Baptist church today, because somebody was willing to drive the bus. I'm Mike Sparks. I was born and raised in Smyrna, born at Old Seward Air Force Base. Any of y'all have family, Seward Air Force Base? My dad flew on the B-17s and flew 24 bombing raids over Germany to help save this country. Okay? I happen to agree with my opponent. We have got to reach this younger generation. I mean, the cancel culture is rampant. The woke crowd is rampant. Folks, if you don't believe it, I mean, I'm at MTSU now. I'm around the young people. I see it. I see it. And the First Amendment is under attack. I don't know if, I hope that y'all ask that question. And I can prove the First Amendment's under attack. I don't, I think whoever reached out to me, I said, do you have enough time? Do you have enough time to talk about these things? Because I don't think you really do have enough time. But I'm, speaking of time, I'm doing the Sheriff's Academy, going through Sheriff's Academy. Going through Sheriff's Academy for a few reasons. One is I'm seeing crime rampant in our community. Folks don't believe it? I was at Laverne High School the other day, case in point. This, I'm not talking about Buffalo, New York, San Francisco. Talking about Smyrna, Tennessee, Laverne, Tennessee. It's happening right here. I found an old newspaper, and I talk about God wink moments. Y'all believe in God wink moments? Call them synchronicities. Well, I've been looking for a newspaper. I had people researching it, couldn't find it. I was on the front cover when I was about 33 years old, I guess. Felt out of place. I was at Lee Victory's Fish Fry. Remember Lee Victory? Lee Victor Pulver? He had a big fish fry. Well, I was on the front page with Ned Ray McWhorter, old Democrat, conservative Democrat. Good guy. I believe in education and roads. And, and I happened to see him. And I felt out of place, but he made me feel like I belonged. He come up to me and shook my hand. I was just a young guy. I didn't know anybody. You know, I didn't have all these, I wasn't kind to all these folks. Probably didn't go to the right churches, Pastor, just to be honest with you. Didn't go to no mega churches or anything. He made me feel like I belonged. That newspaper showed up on the day of our fish fry. It was the last edition of Lee Victory's Fish Fry, 2001. Very coincidental. My opponent, my mentor's on there, and his opponent, which was Robert Mullins, front page. And then my comments were on the front page with Ned Ray McWhorter. I share that to tell you, I took that old newspaper from 2001. I found the football player, Laverne High School football player. Joel O'Brien was his name, 2001, or 2002 graduate. Went over to Laverne High School, met him. He had a little one-year-old boy. Cute as all get at little boy running around. Just so, just cute. Got a picture of him with the football field. Figured it means something to him. All of a sudden, we start hearing a pop, 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 and more pops. You know what they were, Pastor? You know what they were? Gunshots. Gunshots in my community. Those bullets are coming down somewhere. So when the governor of the legislature had that announcement of $100 million, $100 million that we're going to help fund law enforcement, let's do it. But what I'm saying, let's also fund mental health. Let's also fund counselors. Let's also fund de-escalation techniques. And I'll leave you with this real quick. I got to preach my mentor of mine's funeral. Y'all ever know Sally Walls? Y'all ever read The Omni Hut Restaurant? Major Walls, that was my mentors. He owned Omni Hut. My first job when I was 13 years old. Walked to work on many occasions. Uphill both ways, Pastor. And Sally always, yeah, no, okay. $13 an hour, dollar a feet an hour, 13 years of age. But I had neighbors that were mentors. And Sally's son was, Sally was police chief, first assistant police chief in the state. Sally's son was one of my best friends. He was wild as all get out. I think it went back, I think he had some issues. Sadly, he took his own life with his mom's police revolver. But she called me. She said, Mike, you've never forgot where you came from. You never forgot. So you got to remember where we came from. And I had a dream before she died. I've never, well, I shared this at the funeral. I had a dream. I seen her in a hospital bed, laying in a hospital bed. Sally believed in me. She was a trailblazer, man. She really was a trailblazer. And she died three days later after the dream. Well, they asked me to speak at the funeral. So I spoke at the funeral. And I always remember something happened to me when I was 17 years old. And I think we, as a people, Republican, Democrat, black, white, rich, poor, Baptist, Church of Christ, Pentecostal, all of us need to care about this. Had this cop kind of set me up as a kid. I was over a market at the end of your road, well, Todd Lane, Hazelwood. Pulled up, cop drops his hands, just staring at me. I was in this hot rod Camaro, paying the car payment to my dad. So I just drove left. He never would give me direction. Think about this, the metaphor, no direction. These young people need direction. I was a young guy, 17 years old, working hard, paying for the car, living, for the most part, right, as a 17-year-old male. I drove left. He calls in a backup, starts blowing a whistle. Another cop pulled in, Ken Atkins. Ken pulled in. He says, what'd you do? What'd you do? I said, the cop never would give me direction. He wouldn't tell me what to do. I knew I was right, so I took it to Sally Walls. I shared this at the funeral. This is why God gave me the dream, Pastor. I wouldn't have had the courage to say this. And I said, Sally believed in me. She's laying in a casket. And here's where we're at today in this country. You need an advocate. You have to have a lobbyist. I'm just saying. It's sad. That's why I appreciate y'all coming to State Capitol. And I made this comment. Wouldn't have said it if I wouldn't have had the dream. I said, if we got a bad cop in this town, pull him up like a weed or across the state. Get him up by the root, because I could have been on the wrong side because of a bad cop. Now, that's rare for a Republican to talk about that, a conservative to talk about that. But I felt like that's why God gave me that dream, that vision, to share that courage. She believed in me, and I always believed in her. So we have to have mentors. We got to- Young people, we got to speak up against this cancel culture. I'm telling you, it's real. It's happening. First Amendment's under attack. I promise you, I got several examples I give you tonight. That's why I'm going through the Sheriff's Academy for the second time. That's why I'm going through TDO's Academy. So I went through TDO's, C's Academy, a prison, but double. It's worth 600 million. You don't have any pastors to talk about that? Not many, Pastor, not many. And it's also a conservative issue. If you can save a penny, you deserve a penny. Thank y'all for a post.
Amen. Well, my name's Robert Stevens. I'm running for the new state House District, which is number 13. If you look on your voter card and it says House District 13, then you live in the area that I'm running to represent. It's a new district that was carved out of Representative Sparks area and then also Representative Rudd's down in the southwestern part of the county. The new district has a big chunk of Laverne, and it also has a big chunk of the Blackman, Rockvale, and Eagleville areas, which are both connected with a shoestring down the west side of the county. So if you live in Laverne, or if you live in the Blackman, Rockvale, or Eagleville areas, you're probably in this new district. I served on the county commission for 12 years. I was consistently the most conservative commissioner. Fiscal responsibility is very important to me. We've got to manage our money wisely. What's going on in Washington, DC is just out of control. And we definitely don't want Tennessee to go that direction. I stood up for ethics. I stood up for professionalism. I stood for positive reforms when I was a county commissioner. I'll do the very same thing as a state representative. I'm running for this office for a very simple reason. I believe that we have to do everything that we can at the state level to push back against the radical Biden agenda. Everything that we can. Our country is on a terrible trajectory, and we have got to try to right this ship. And at the state level, there are things that we can do to push back, and I'm willing to do those and make those difficult decisions. We had a billion-dollar surplus last year thanks to Republican leadership in our General Assembly. We're moving the right direction in Tennessee, and I want to be another voice that will continue moving forward, moving our state forward in the positive direction and benefiting all of our citizens as we continue to grow here, especially in Rutherford County. Other issues that are important to me that I hope we talk about tonight are crime, as Representative Sparks mentioned, education, and supporting our local law enforcement officers, and also opposing illegal immigration. I look forward to your questions, and I thank your congregation for hosting the event and for Mr. Snodderly moderating tonight.
Just a reminder that we only have a few candidates here tonight. We have a limited time, so we're just asking that we keep our answers short and simple. The sound guys have been given the time limit. We're going to keep it to a couple of minutes, and they will cut our mics off at that time. All right? Brother Snodderly?
Amen. Well, thank you, Brother Adam, and Brother Chiskar, and Rutherford County Baptist Church for hosting this event this evening. My name is Aaron Snodderly. I'm the executive director of the Tennessee Independent Baptist for Religious Liberty. And our organization works to promote religious constitutional values at the State Capitol and in Washington, DC. So Brother Sparks sees me around quite frequently there at the Capitol and other people. I will say, make an announcement before we proceed with the evening's events, that we will be having our pastors and Christians' Day on Capitol Hill this year, excuse me, February 28th of the year 2023. So just here in a few months at the State Capitol, we'll have hundreds of Christians downtown. We want you to be a part of it. So please mark February 28th, 2023 on your calendar, and we'll be there to pray with our politicians and let them know where we stand on the issues. Well, at this time, we're going to proceed with our questions in front of us. They have been submitted, most of them, as a matter of fact, all of them, by the audience this evening. And so we'll begin, first of all, with Representative Sparks, and then we'll go this way, and then we'll reverse the order and go back that way with the next round of questions. And the men in the back at the sound booth will be letting you know when your time is about to expire. The first question is, we're in a church tonight, and we want to know where you stand on the issue of the First Amendment, religious freedom, that sort of thing. And may I remind everyone too, before we proceed, that we are in a church tonight. And so please, let's keep everything civil, if we can at all possible, possibility. And we refrain from taking God's name in vain in the house of the Lord and those sort of things. So please respect that, if you would. And also too, if you wouldn't refrain your clapping until the end of the service, so that we do not show favoritism to one candidate over another. Mr. Sparks, where do you stand on religious freedom and the First Amendment?
Well, it's under attack. How many of y'all believe that? Raise your hand. Anybody, let me ask you, anybody that does not believe that, raise your hand. Well, it's 100% approval just now. So it is under attack. And I'll give you case in point. There's a church, Word of Life in Laverne, shut down by government. How many of y'all know about Word of Life being shut down past lows? Only two hands? Two hands. Stephen, Paul. Telling you, folks, see, how many people aren't informed about this? Black church in Laverne. You know who built that church? Giles Creek Baptist Church. Built it with the labor of love. I don't make news. Don't make news. Sadly, it don't make news. Pastor call, I heard about it. I'll tell you how I heard about it. Through the janitor at David Jury School. I used to go to David Jury School. Started talking to the janitor. He grew up during segregation, played football at Holloway, thumbed a ride back and forth, didn't have transportation. And I said, where you go to church at, man? He says, we're locked out. We're locked out. I said, what do you mean locked out? He said, we're locked out. I said, how you locked out? This has been about five years ago. It was over an easement dispute. The pastor didn't know. He's a pastor. If you don't believe how serious this is, y'all go to YouTube. Young people, I really want you young people to really listen to this. Go to YouTube, type in Word of Life, Laverne. He had no lobbyist. I know you don't want me to use profanity. I get upset when I see folks that are, just don't have a lot of money. They were out $56,000, two years, they couldn't worship. How many of y'all get angry about that? Where a church down the road built it with the labor of love. We should all be angry about that. All of us. Not many people are angry. I had to beg a journalist to do a story. Had to beg a journalist. Another church, River of Life. How many of y'all know about River of Life back here by Burger King? They're threatened to be shut down. I made a video. If y'all know about River Life, he kept calling me, Representative, you know, they're telling me they're going to lock- Lock my doors. Lock my doors. Is that my time, I guess? Okay. First Amendment's under attack. I got more proof, so I hope you ask me that question.
Well, thank you. I do believe that our religious liberties are very important. I'm an attorney by trade. I love our Constitution. I love our Bill of Rights. Our First Amendment actually protects five things. It protects our right to assemble. It protects the freedom of the press, our freedom of speech, freedom of religion, and freedom of association. And they all go together. I believe that our freedom of religion is very important in our country. In fact, it's the First Amendment for a reason. These things are our most cherished things. And of course, they're backed up with the Second Amendment, which is our right to protect that First Amendment. But our freedom of religion is paramount. Our country was founded on Judeo-Christian values. I believe that we have lost our way, and we need a reformation to get back to those Judeo-Christian values that our esteemed and brilliant founding fathers used to give us this great country.
Thank you, sir.
All right. So for me, I agree, but I agree in a different manner. Our first degree is, excuse me, our first degree, our First Amendment is under attack, especially our religious freedom. But it's not because, it's not because we are not fighting for that freedom. It's because we don't understand what that freedom looks like. There's not a specific definition of freedom of religion. When we talk about freedom of religion or attacking it, we have to make sure that we are keeping an open mind for everyone, and that that freedom stands for everyone. So I, I agree. I do think it is something that we need to continue to fight for. I think it's something that we need to continue to stand on. And I think that we need to, just like Mr. Sparks said, make sure that people are educated about what is really going on, and not just, you know, the older people, but my generation as well. We need to make sure that we are getting more people involved so that we can make sure that the longevity of what we stand for can continue on as tradition.
Is that, you're finished? Okay. So let's pursue this just a little bit more. Not just the freedom to assemble, but the freedom for a pastor to preach that which God has laid on his heart and as he reads his Bible. For instance, the state of California said, because some people are offended by what the Bible says about certain sins such as homosexuality, a pastor should not be allowed to counsel someone with the Bible and read those Bible passages to them, because someone who is offended has more freedom than those who are not offended. Would you expound upon that, please?
Absolutely. So the best thing about us being able to express ourselves is that we have the option to choose not to be there. I feel, I'm heavy in the church community. I am very strong about my beliefs and my faith, and I know the right way is the right way. When we are educated about what it says in the Bible, there's no, there's no turning away from that. When you are raised in the church, you know what it is, and you know what you abide by. The Ten Commandments do not change. However, the world is changing. And so what I do think, again, comes with freedom, is the freedom for people to separate themselves. If they don't want to hear what we believe is the truth or what the Bible says, then they have the option to not listen. But I don't think that it is right to take that away from anyone or to say that they cannot teach what has been taught for thousands of years.
Going on in California is blatantly unconstitutional. That freedom of religion, freedom of speech, applies to pastors. It applies to parishioners. It applies to everybody. For the government to come in and tell someone you can't preach the gospel is a violation of First Amendment, period. There's no excuse for that. Folks, our country is in dire, we're in a very bad position. When these types of things are allowed to happen, where pastors can't preach the gospel, where parishioners can't share the gospel without offending someone and getting punished somehow by the state or by a city, we've lost our way and have to, have to return to where we were, when we were founded. I am so disappointed to hear things like this happening. We can't let this happen in Tennessee. We cannot let Tennessee become like California or any of these other liberal places that want to take away the morality and the righteousness that our country was founded upon. And I'm committing to fighting to protect those freedoms here in Tennessee.
I was thinking about what Jesus talked about. Jesus, back in his day, I guess, was kind of a radical, kind of a rebel. I mean, who stands up for a prostitute? Think about that. If that happened today, how many of us going to stand up for a prostitute? Who's going to stand up for Lisa Thies? Hopefully, everybody would, you know? I was just talking to a guy that called me, and you could tell, me and him, you could tell politically we're on opposite sides. But I don't know if he's a believer or not. But the things that Jesus talked about, second greatest commandment was love thy neighbor as yourself. I mean, Robert was my opponent years ago. But I think Robert's got very talented. I think he's got great things to do in Nashville, and I want to help him get to Nashville. But when you look at society, when you, and it goes back to cancel culture, that's cancel culture, Pastor. It really is happening. And it pains me to even say that, because I've had it happen to me. Somebody will take your comments totally out of context and try to use them against you. That may be even, that may even happen tonight. You never know. But I was asking my assistant, just, I called my sister, he's young African-American, about 27 years old. Good young man, solid, solid guy, out of Memphis. Solid guy. Been the best assistant I've ever, I've really ever had. I said, hey, you got any words I should talk about? He says, well, you may want to mention Obama. And I was like, Obama? It's kind of wild to say, mention Obama. I don't know if y'all see what Obama said. It was either yesterday or day before yesterday. He said, today, it's walking on eggshells. Did y'all see what his comment, anybody see his comments? One guy, only one guy sees his comments. But he was talking about cancel culture. And you can't, all this walking on eggshells. Our forefathers wasn't that way. My dad told me, you don't pay that car payment, I'm repoing that car. You get arrested, son, I'm not coming after you. First Amendment, I'm telling you, it's under attack. So how much time does that mean I got? Five seconds? 20 seconds? Look at what happened to John DeBerry. John DeBerry, Church of Christ minister, marched with Dr. King, marched Dr. King. Democrats took him off the ballot. Cancel culture. He spoke at World Outreach last week. Maybe we can get him over here, Pastor, next few weeks. His talk is called Trouble and Trials in America. Watch it. It's on YouTube. John DeBerry.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sparks, we'll start with you on this question. This past legislative session, Representative Kevin Vaughn sponsored HB 1989, and I'm sure you don't remember it by its number, so I'll just tell you what the bill would do. It created the interstate compact between the states of Arkansas, Mississippi, and Tennessee. And it would create what would become known as the Region Smart Development District and the Region Smart Development Agency of the Greater Memphis Area. It was designed to promote business growth in that tri-state area. The concern about the bill that arose very quickly after it was, became known, was that it would possibly grant the Region Smart Development Agency Commission the authority to implement, without the approval of local governments or state governments, eminent domain, which would not only affect private businesses, but it would affect that of churches, schools, so many other things, people's homes they've lived in for 50 years or more, you know? So the question to you is, and to the other candidates on the stage, is if a bill like that comes up again next year, if it indeed- is if a bill like that comes up again next year, if it indeed does grant such power, would you support it?
No, I believe in, I believe in local control as much as we can, we can give it, you know, whether it's school boards, local aldermen, mayors. Put that in the hands of the people that, that we've elected, that Mark Hardy elected, that Stephen Page elected, that Paul elected. Put it in the hands of those folks. I know Representative Vaughn, great guy. I tend to agree with him on a lot of issues. He'll, he'll challenge the status quo, and I like that. That's what I like about Robert. I think Robert will challenge, well, maybe worry a little bit about you, because Robert will speak up, and I appreciate that. But Representative Vaughn is a strong man of conviction. But that's where it takes voices of you and the pastor and others. If there is, if there's a bad, because sometimes things are put out there on a silver platter, and they look great. You're like, "I'm for this." You gotta be really careful of saying that until you get all the information. Because sometimes you get people working a bill really hard, because they're paid lobbyists. And so a lot of citizens can't come up there and lobby unless it's an email, or a phone call, or something like, like that. Mark's, Mark's lobbied me on some issues, and I've listened to him. But I don't plan on vote, I wouldn't plan on voting for it without some local control, local input. Thank you.
Well, I have several concerns with that type of thing. One is accounting commissioner. Whenever the state or federal government sends mandates to us, especially ones they don't pay for, it's very frustrating when they take away our ability to make decisions. And the other thing is personal property rights. When somebody can come in that's an unelected bureaucrat, or an unelected appointee, and make decisions, and they don't have to face voters that pick them to represent them, I have a problem with turning over control to some kind of unelected agency like that. Now, I've not read the bill. I don't know what it does, and I'm not very familiar with this concept at all. But anything that takes away local control from decision-making and planning is going to be something that I will be very suspicious of, and certainly would want to know more information about it before committing one way or the other on voting for it.
Thank you. I would have to agree. I think that we need to exercise local control, for sure. I think there are different levels, and I would like to know more about the specifics of the bill. What does it do, and who specifically does it affect? I think that there are, there has been a lot of change, and I think that it drives prices, it changes things. And if you are not local, especially in Rutherford County, if you are not local, then you don't know the good people of Rutherford County, and how that has affected them. So I would agree. I would like to know more about the bill. I would like to know, just like he said, are there going to be specific elected officials? Are we going, what say-so do we have, and what, what, what rights can we exercise within that bill? But I agree. I think that we should have a say on what happens with us.
So just a quick acknowledgement from each of you. You would not support eminent domain without local control and local input on it. You would not support the government taking people's properties, so.
No, if that's happening, we need to, we need to know about it.
It was a possibility this year, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, eminent domain is very dangerous, and if somebody can take away your rights, especially someone that's not elected, I've got a big problem with that.
We'll start with you, ma'am. There's a lot of talk right now in the media about, should the state get involved in building a new Tennessee Titans stadium?
I'm just gonna be very, very, very frank. Tennesseans, a lot of them are struggling. And what I mean by that is financially. We need help, especially when you're talking Rutherford County. I know you guys see those new luxury living popping up everywhere, but what's not luxury is our schools. The kids in Rutherford County, especially over at Laverne, I know for an hour and a half a day, block schedule, 90% of them, once a day, are sitting in the gym because we don't have teachers. We, our roads, our infrastructure, I can go on and on about a list of things that we need help with, that is going to go a lot longer than just creating more money for Nashville. Like, we always want to create income. We always want to create, you know, tourism and all of that. But at the end of the day, we have to be able to survive. And I don't feel like, I don't see how a new Titans stadium helps the rest of Tennesseans survive. It's entertainment. So I'm all about survival. I want, I want something that's going to help everybody in Tennessee, not just, you know, on Sunday nights.
I would not have supported $500 million for the Titans stadium. If the Titans or Nashville wants a stadium, they need to raise up their own money to pay for that. The state's handing out $500 million to these mega, mega millionaires and billionaires that own the Titans, and we got a sales tax holiday in August. So you save $30 on your groceries. So I've got a big problem with that. And it leads to another question, which is if we had this much money to throw around, whether it's giving grants out to businesses, or whether it's putting the state on the hook for bonds for the Titans, somebody's paying too much in taxes, if there's this much money to throw around. And so I would not have supported that. I don't think that the state should have put $500 million into it. And if they wanted to do the project, then they probably need to come up with a way to pay for it on their own.
I didn't vote, I didn't vote for the, for the funding. I told the speaker I couldn't support it. And he was very, very understanding, you know? I've never been strong armed up there. So that's, that's a blessing. Thank you to Cameron Sexton, who's our speaker. He's done a great, great job. Last Sunday night, I do a radio show on WGNS called Rutherford Magazine. I had a young, had a guy, they've got an event called Soldiers for Christ at Boys and Girls Club, October 22nd, if anybody wants to get involved. And I had him come up on the air. We were talking, and guy's former military, and African-American minister, strong, passionate guy. Goes to a little Bible study we do at Hope Fellowship over here, Paul Fellowship on Leviathan Parkway. But I was telling him, I said, "I brought it up on the air. I didn't fund that. And if anything, we've got to, going back to, and I applaud Ms. Woodbury on that, because we do have to reach these young people. And I bought my first house at 22. How many people gonna buy a house at 22 now? Started my first business at 21. Who could do that today? Not many people can do that. We toured, I had the Secretary of State in today. We toured Stonecrest Hospital, toured Smirnoff Ready Mix, Streetside Classic Cars, presented a grant, $15,000 for Laverne, Laverne Library for computers, and toured Ingram Book Company. And you look at the, sometimes the disconnect that exists out there in our, in our society. At the hospital, the CEO, Luke Budo, "We're gonna tour the hospital now." And I went to say, "Hey, hold on, let's," because I had a couple more questions. Having a hard time getting nurses, hard time getting teachers, hard time getting truck drivers, hard time getting all kinds. My mom's a nurse, I'm hard time getting folks to work nursing homes. And when I, when I went to say, "Hey, hold on," because there was a conference table full of their top staff, another lady chimed in, and she brought up mental health, and that was gonna be my question, mental health. They expanded their facility over there. 16 beds. He said, "Mike, it's full. It's full."
There's so many other priorities. There's more priorities than billing out billionaires like Commissioner Rock. Just trying to.
Mr. Sparks, we'll go back to you for this question. We hear every election from both parties, that this is the most important election. And yet, the last two presidential elections, we've heard from both parties that the election was stolen from me. How can we be assured that our elections are free and fair with only one legal citizen voting? I guess what, what the question is trying to say is, how can we be assured that it's only one legal citizen voting, not people who are illegal?
Well, it was ironic. I was with the Secretary of State today, and that's, kind of, he oversees that. He took the time out with me, spent, I guess, six hours today, seven hours. Trey's a, Trey's a great guy, Secretary Hargit, I should say. And we were just raid, I think, Heritage, Heritage Foundation, I think, did a report, and named Tennessee had the most secure elections in the, in the nation. I believe if you, if you get, if you gotta show ID for other things, show ID when you vote. I don't see a problem with that. If you're, if you have a family member that passes, I heard of somebody the other day saying, it was a radio show or something, said that when their mom and dad passed, they made sure that their names were off the voter rolls. Thought, oh, okay, didn't think about that. But I think Tennessee, I've had calls, people may not agree with the election. Tennessee, I think we, I think we do it right. I think we do a lot of things right. And don't just take my word for it. Look at the, the report that came out with the Heritage Foundation. And if you ever see any voter irregularities or fraud, call my office, or call Alan, Alan Farley, the Director of Elections. Thank you.
This is a very important topic to many people, and our right to vote is one of the bedrock principles of our country. And each vote is sacred. Each vote matters. Each vote counts. And Tennessee is one of the safest places for voting. We have secure elections here. I would encourage you to contact our Elections Administrator. I've had this conversation with him numerous times, with people asking me questions about ways that Russia or all these entities might come in and hack our system through the internet. Well, our voting machines don't use the internet, so that's not even possible here. There are things that we can do to make it stronger, though. One of the efforts, I think, that might have been sponsored this year or the year before, was to require an auditable paper trail for each vote. So that way, if there is any kind of allegation of shenanigans with the voting machines, they can go back and count the paper, paper tabulations, too, instead of just relying on a, on a computer. I feel very confident about our elections in Tennessee, making people show ID to vote. If you ask for a mail-in ballot, you have to fill out personal information and sign it. And the election office will verify your signature against the signature on your voter application. And so I don't think in our county, in our state, we don't, I don't think we need to worry as much as other places about voter fraud, because we have very tight and secure elections here, and I think that we should be proud of that.
Um, for me, I was, first of all, let me agree with what he just said. Like, we have a lot less voter fraud in our area, because we have a lot less voter turnout. We had a 14% voter turnout this past election. So make sure you tell everybody, early voting starts tomorrow. But the other part of that is access. One of the things that was brought up was putting polls on campuses, or making sure that we have, one of the things they do in Rutherford County is, you can vote anywhere in Rutherford County, whether you live in Smyrna, you can vote in Murfreesboro, your vote is still valid as long as you have the right documents. That's something that is unique that Rutherford County does. And I think that if we continue to push things like that, make sure that it's accessible, yet valid, then we can make sure that we are getting our voter turnout, and that the vote is safe. But Tennessee has a very good, strong system. And I think that we just need to work to keep improving it, and work to make it more accessible.
Thank you. Ms. Woodbury, what is your view on climate change, and what would you view your role as a state representative to be in it?
Climate change is real, absolutely. I think that one of the main things we really should focus on is our carbon footprint, of course. We also want to make sure that we are, I guess my position would be to make sure that we are taking it serious. One of the main things in Rutherford County that I think is a long, a long-term issue, or that adds to that issue, is like, the landfill. You know, that causes a lot of issues in our district and in our area. And so we, for those that don't know, Rutherford County takes on, our landfill takes on, I think, a few other counties and maybe another state worth of trash. So Rutherford County's landfill is all the way up here, when we, Rutherford County, really bring in about this much trash or stuff like that. So I think what needs to happen is, we need to make sure that we are responsible, one, for our county only, or our state only. But then furthermore, we need to make sure that we are intentional about getting involved and finding ways that we can make sure that, as a society, we can move on further, or that we can be successful. Things like recycling, actually make sure that recycling happens. Things like, you know, there are volunteer opportunities for the college, or for the college and the high school students, so that they can contribute back in that. Making sure they have access and tools to continue on in the future, to make those processes better. But I do think it's important. I do think it's something that needs to be, again, worked towards, and maybe have a few things that go along with it to make it better, or to improve it.
Well, Voltaire said, "If you wish to converse with me, define your terms." So climate change can be defined in many different ways. If we're talking about natural climate change, then the climate has changed ever since recorded history. Now, if we're talking about man-made climate change, you can find all kinds of studies that show you any kind of results out there, based on who the scientist is. I believe it's somewhat arrogant to assume that man can change the climate with our actions. I don't know how our activities can change something that's already on a trajectory for change. Regardless, though, there are things with, with this climate change discussion, that I think the state can use to save money. If we reduce our paper usage, for example, and go more electronic and technology, then you don't take as many trees out, which helps with the carbon conservation. If we recycle more, and try to get more out of what we do have, it not only saves money, but it conserves resources, too. So I do believe there's things that the state can do. Rutherford County did some technology upgrades, and I was on the county commission. Those saved us money, and also reduced our footprint, too. So I do believe that we can do things to help with this quote-unquote "climate change," but I don't know to what extent man-made climate change is as rampant as you might hear on TV.
What is your view of climate change, and how do you perceive your role as a state representative concerning it?
First of all, as a state lawmaker, I don't know what we can do about climate change. I don't think I've had a bill that, that's really dealing with climate change. Like Commissioner Stevens said, you know, really only God knows about the climate and what's gonna happen. What frustrates me with, with government, with the media, and so many other areas, is that we're talking about this, and there was violent crime the other day happened. A lady was murdered in Laverne. Young man shot a guy over here in Smyrna. Those are issues we need to be talking about. But I can probably say that I probably recycle more than anybody in here. I probably do, seriously. I'm over at the dump over there two times a week, three times a week, then they'll be my name, carry the guy some coffee over there, recycle cardboard, plastic when I can. I think this landfill, like Ms. Woodbury mentioned, I was talking about as a young, young county commissioner. And if somebody could help me, I wish somebody could go back and look at the video, when I was the only county commissioner. You know, I often talk about it's lonely in politics. I was the only law, only county commissioner that voted not to sell the guy James Farm to MTSU. The guy James Farm was bought for a secondary landfill. I was the only one, had people get mad at me, because everybody wanted to walk, lockstep, go in the same direction. About two years ago, I was chairman of Consumer. Somebody had a bill up that we had some controversy. And I said, "I want to be able, when I have grandkids, and I got a future grandchild coming, I want to be able to catch a fish, brought up in the pan, out of Perspere Slate." Week later, that announcement, "Don't eat the fish, Perspere Slate, because of the mercury. The mercury." That's alarming to me, when it's happening right here in our community. So environmental issues are something we need to care about. I don't know how we combat climate change. I just say, "Let's fix the things that we can fix, like crime, mental health, weak lane convenience center."
You mentioned crime in our community. What would you do as a state representative to try and reduce the crime in our communities? And also, do you believe that our current criminal justice system disproportionately impacts certain communities? Or do you believe that our justice system is indeed blind?
Great question. That's a loaded question right there. We got enough time? Really? No, I think, I think we've got a lot of flaws. That's why I'm going back to Sheriff's Academy. That's why I ask the questions that nobody else is gonna ask in there. That's why I mentioned my mentor, Sally Walls, who believed in me. Sally was very progressive, to say the least, if folks knew Sally. I mean, what woman goes through the police academy? I was 12 years old, watching this woman, and she was on the heavy side, going through, jumping on a six-foot wall. Everybody was mocking her. She believed in herself. She had faith. And she had faith in me. I appreciate it. No, I think there is some elements that's unfair. I had a bill called juvenile justice. Had a lady call me the other day, and this is the first time I've ever shared this. There's no one in the media here, are there? Because this is gonna get me in trouble. Well, I had a bill about juvenile justice. I had no support. I was told, three months ago, my bill would have passed, it'd save the taxpayer $6 million. $6 million. You know what that's over? Judge in Murfreesboro. Judge in Murfreesboro. I stood with the Black Caucus, only Republican ever stand with the Black Caucus, that they know of, because of juvenile justice. Yeah, some people need to be incarcerated. Some people need a father. Some people need a mentor. Some people need access to a job and direction. We're losing this next generation, folks. It's alarming. It's scary. We, as Christians, even if you're a non-Christian, you need to be believing in this, and trying to reach these young people. I think the system's a little jacked up. I took a stand on PCC. You know what PCC was? Google Mike Sparks, Ernest Burgess. I got in a big fight with the mayor. They put me on the front page of the paper. Lord fought it. Two days later, I said, "Your jail's over capacity. Why you lock people up behind on probation? It's costing us $28,000 a year. You lock people up because they're behind on probation by a few hundred dollars? How does that make sense?" The end of the program, the reporter put me on
Two-part question, so let me answer the first part, and then we'll get to the second part if we have time. The first thing we've got to do is figure out what to do with these violent criminals. If you commit violent crime, you need to go to jail and stay there. This revolving door where people come in for a violent crime and get out and do it again and come back, and, you know, this has got to stop. If you commit a violent crime in Tennessee, you need to go to jail and stay there, period. Now, that's going to take some additional funds, because our prisons are full. So we've got a billion-dollar surplus, I don't know how much it costs to make a prison, how much it costs to staff a prison, but that is, it's going to be a lot. But if we want these violent people off the streets, we're going to have to put them somewhere instead of turning them loose to go out and commit crimes again. So that's something we're going to have to look at, is cracking down on crime with our laws. The other part of, the first part of the question, though, is that we've got to figure out a way to work with the youth to keep them engaged and keep them from getting on a bad track from the beginning. So many of our problems stem from not being able to read in the third grade. They build the number of prisons based on how many people can and cannot read in third grade. So we've got to figure out how we increase our standards in schools and get these kids more engaged with mentors and positive things, so that they don't go out and commit the crimes when they're 18 and 25, which seems to be the age range where all these violent criminals are happening. I do believe there are studies that show that certain communities are affected more than others with arrest and criminal prosecution, and I don't have the answer to those. I think it's arrogant for anyone to say, "I have the answer on how to fix this." But I certainly would want input from those communities and from our police officers and how we might be able to reform the system and make it equitable and make sure that everyone's treated fairly.
So, I'm just going to be frank, what I'm going to say is probably going to be a bit controversial. As a black person, I didn't hear either one of my constituents mention the percentage. 36% of TNCNs are black, 36. When you look at the amount of black people and brown people that are in jails, they are the minority. That does not add up. Mr. Sparks, I know you've been in office for a while, and I know you've brought up a couple things, but what I have not heard you bring up is what you have done or actively doing to help support those minorities, or what we can do to support our policemen. We talk about mental health, but I don't hear any person saying, "Why aren't social workers on call at the police departments? Why aren't we having social workers or these young people that are interns in political science or that are learning these things come educate?" It's not for a lack of trying, it is for a lack of access and knowledge. So no, I'm not for defunding the police at all, I want them to have more money. Get DCS in the building, get social workers in the building so that we can identify mental health. I don't know if you guys know, but there's no emergency mental health in Rutherford County. Let me tell you what they do do. If you have a police officer that happens to identify that there is a mental health crisis happening, then they call the ambulance. The ambulance will take them to Stonecrest to see if they can be forcibly put into a psych ward. If they cannot, the ambulance is to drop them off at whatever time, wherever they were picked up. So we're talking about, we're talking about people that are specifically targeted, but we have people that are supposed to be protecting us that are not educated, that are not aware of what it takes, and that are scared. I don't know about you all, but when I go out and I see these people protecting us, I'm scared for them. So I can only imagine that they're scared themselves. Let's give them the education and the knowledge to, one, not be discriminative, two, let's change some of the laws. I don't know if you guys know, but Tennessee is one of the main places for opiates. We have a strong opiate overdose percentage. Fentanyl is at an all-time high. But you know who's most likely to go to jail? A person with a marijuana charge. We have to think about this, we have to do something to change it. I can't tell you, raise your hand if you have ever taught your child what to do when they've been pulled over.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
I want you guys to think about that.
Thank you for sharing your views. We have three minutes left in this session, so I just want a yes and no on these following questions, if you would. Do you consider yourself to be pro-life? Just yes or no, it'll be fine, we only have three minutes left in this session, so.
I consider myself to be pro-choice.
Okay. Mr. Stevens?
I'm pro-life, and again, I think we have to define our terms. I believe that life begins at conception, but we also have to provide the resources necessary for these children that are brought into the world, too. We need to make adoption easier and lower cost, and we've also got to have resources to help these mothers if we're going to bring these children in, which I certainly believe we want to do.
Mr. Stevens, yes or no, are you pro-life?
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sparks?
Yes, I'm pro-life. Google John DeBerry, watch John DeBerry speak at World Outreach. Strong pro-life, they took him off the ballot. Talk about the First Amendment, nefarious, because he was-
Let's, yeah, yep.
See what's going on, folks.
Yep, yes or no, just a simple yes or no. Do you support same-sex marriage? Or do you support the Tennessee State Constitution as voted on by over 80% of our population?
I'm going to support our constitution.
I do not support same-sex marriage, and I do support our state constitution.
I'm in support of our state constitution.
Okay. So you do not support same-sex marriage?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I do support same-sex marriage. Apologies.
Okay. Okay, concerning the Tenth Amendment, do you believe that the state of Tennessee should have certain rights concerning how it governs in areas that the United States Constitution does not specify? Just yes or no.
I have a lot more to say about that one, but I think that we should be able to have, be able to govern where the US Constitution doesn't cover. I think we should be able to govern.
Mr. Stevens, do you support the Tenth Amendment?
I do, it's there for a reason, and if something is not specifically outlined for the federal government to do, they need to stay out of it and let the states do those things.
Mr. Sparks?
Yes, our forefathers were brilliant. Do you trust the federal government, or do you trust state government? Don't trust the federal government, they've ruined everything, just look what's going on.
One more, one more quick question, yes or no. Do you support the governor's plan for charter schools, and do you support vouchers?
I support liberty, freedom. One word? Yes.
I do support school choice, I believe parents should have the right to send their children to the schools that they want to attend, and so I do think we need to look at ways to increase access to other options for the parents.
I'm going to say I do not support it, only because we have not made sure that public schools are successful and that they have the same resources that they're saying charter schools will have to be successful. So I'm going to say no. I think that we should make sure that we are perfecting something before we go make something new.
Okay, one last thing, and we are finished until the next session. Your first day in office, if you're elected, what would you want to tackle first? What would your first bill address? The one you're most passionate about, don't go into detail, just tell us what it is, please.
School safety.
Thank you.
I cannot believe she said that, but school safety.
Fund law enforcement, fund SROs, fund mental health, fund counselors. I had a bill about social workers, by the way.
Let's give our candidates a round of applause, please. Thank you all very much. Brother Adam, did you have some things you wanted to say? Okay, great, thank you all, may I have a seat in the auditorium if you'd like.
All right, you can grab the hymnbook in front of you, we're going to turn to page 587, 587, "America the Beautiful." You can remain seated, 587, "America the Beautiful." You can remain seated, page number 587, we'll sing the first and the third verses there, you can remain seated as we sing, 587, "America the Beautiful." Let's begin on that first verse, first and third verses, first and third verses, 587, "America the Beautiful." Oh, beautiful, for spacious skies, for amber waves of gray, for purple mountain majesties above the fruitet plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood, from sea to shining sea. On that third verse, oh, beautiful, for heroes proved in liberating strife, who more than self their country love, and mercy more than life. America, America, may God thy gold refine, till all success be nobleness, and every All right, before we get going into the second half of our program tonight, I wanted to make sure, are there any other candidates for any other offices that are here tonight? I'd like to recognize you, if you could stand. Any other candidates, if you could stand, if you could just tell us your name and what you're running for, please.
My name is Mark Wilson, I'm running for Trump.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Alex Day, I'm from North Carolina.
And we will, excuse me, we will be having a time of refreshment afterwards, and I do encourage the candidates to stick around and answer any other questions that people might have, and I believe you put some, some information out on both of you, so there is information for all of our candidates on the back table as you walk out tonight. All right, we're going to get started with the second half of our, of our program tonight. These are the two candidates that are running for the United States Congress. We have Mr. Mike Winton and Mr. Wayne Steele. If you guys can come on up here, we'll give them a round of applause while they come on up. And Brother Aaron, you in your way? All right, we have the microphones up here for you guys. We'll do the same thing, we'll give you guys an opportunity to make a two-minute opening statement, and then Brother Charlie will get right in with the questions. Thank you, guys.
Hello, thank you for, thank you for having me tonight. I actually grew up in the Baptist church, so it's good to be back. I'm still a Christian, but just not Baptist. I am a native of Fayetteville, Lincoln County, Tennessee, seventh-generation Tennessean. My dad was a truck driver, my mom was a stay-at-home mom. My background's in healthcare, I've been a sole proprietor, licensed massage therapist for 12 years. And most recently, I was a COVID-19 contact tracer, working from home and making cold calls to people who were sick. And I got to see how poorly handled it was staving off COVID and preventing disease, to the point to where I went for a test to the local health department and pointed out something that was wrong, and they turned me into the state and fired me. So with that said, I stand up for what's right, what in my gut I know is right. And a little bragging rights, I guess, I won that unemployment claim without an attorney. For all you attorneys in the room, sorry, you didn't get any money. Well, I guess I'm not sorry. But yeah, I decided to get in the race, because I just saw that too many people were just not treated equally, and I mean that across the board, across faiths, across genders, across races and everything. So, yep, I'm excited to be here tonight, and glad that it's actually a church that's
America's complicated. I don't know if I wanted to use this mic or not, it kept getting cut off for some reason, I don't know what was going on. Sparks leave, I don't see him anymore. I'm also glad I'm not the incumbent, because he did mention that Congress is in a mess. Folks, you may be surprised that Congress only has an 18% approval rating. 18%. I just wonder, for all the working people, if we perform at that level on our jobs, or if your pastor only had 18% approval in the church, or the song director only was approved by 18% of the congregation, how long would we be able to fulfill that position? America's complicated. And, and people that become embedded in Congress and are serving in Congress create that complication, because they forget about we, the people. And we, the people, are the ones that they should be representing, not special interests, not lobbyists, not corporate bodies, not their own caucus, but we, the people. I grew up on a small farm over in Grundy County, Tennessee, over here just almost to Mont Eagle, and my mom raised four of us kids on shirt factory pay by herself. And folks, that, I don't know if you know anything about that, but that's something like a dollar sixty-five an hour. And to be able to subsidize that, she would get up every morning and prepare biscuits and sausage, and she would carry those to the factory to sell, to earn extra income to feed her four kids. On top of that, in the evening, she would go clean the local bank. My mom didn't even own a car. My grandmother owned a station wagon, she allowed my mother to take the riders to the factory. So I know what it's like to deal paycheck to paycheck. I know that we're living in a [BLEEP] right now, and I appreciate the church having us. I'm Mike Winton, I'm an independent candidate for Congress, and I appreciate the vote and the [BLEEP].
Let's give them both a round of applause again, please. Okay, gentlemen, thank you for being here tonight. If you're elected to Congress, you will be governing according to the United States Constitution. So we want to begin with a simple yes or no answer. Have you read the United States Constitution in its entirety?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Second question, following up on that, what is your view of the United States Constitution? We'll begin with you, sir. Do you view it as a living, breathing document that should change with the whims of society, or do you believe that it should stand to continue representing the ideals of our founding fathers?
I believe that the Constitution is the very soul of our country, and that, that the preparation of the Constitution wasn't taken in lightheartedness with the whims of any man that signed it or prepared it. I believe that the foundation of this country, much like the morality of this country, has to have its roots. We see the morality decaying day after day after day, and if you change the Constitution to every whim that comes along and every individual that wants a different thing, then you lose that value. Folks, we'll not change America and the morality by changing the Constitution. You'll not change that by electing me to office, you'll change that in your home. And then we'll take it to the street, we'll even bring it to our church, and the next thing you know, it'll be change in America that we live in.
I do believe it's a living document, and it has within it the power to not change on a whim, because it requires a two-thirds vote in the House and the Senate, and then two-thirds of the states. So if you don't have an agreement across a coalition of a vast number of people legislatures, you're not going to get anything passed. If it weren't a living document, we would still have slavery. If it weren't a living document, women still would not have the right to vote. I think that the founders were very careful. Morality is not governed by the Constitution, it is governed by our faith, and that faith I want to be careful, but on the other hand, I have to be blunt as well. The founding fathers used very careful language in the Constitution, and they did not include, like they did in the Declaration of Independence, the word Creator. There is not found in the Constitution Creator, God, Jesus, Buddha, whatever.
There is not in, found in the Constitution Creator, God, Jesus, Buddha, whatever, um, deity that someone worships. And that was purposeful. And that's because we have equal rights to worship as we see in the First Amendment that was talked about earlier. Uh, and that should not be infringed upon.
Mr. Steele, believing that as you do, and you are correct that there is a clause that provides to change the Constitution, what would you change?
Uh, well, if you've reviewed my website, uh, I, I actually call for a 21st century Bill of Rights. And that's, uh, to make voting equal, to make, uh, working rights equal, uh, to make unis, unitization equal. It's already in the First Amendment that we have the right to freely assemble. The, the first thing that I would introduce is, uh, reintroduce is the Equal Rights Amendment. Women are not paid the same as men. And whether or not it's our religious value that, you know, uh, men should be paid more than women or that women, uh, that I don't agree with, that women ought to be second in the household. That's your, your view, not mine. And I would reintroduce the Equal Rights Amendment to include the right to privacy for your private healthcare decisions. Because it's not your neighbor's right. It's not your state government's business. It's not your federal government's business what healthcare you get.
Mr. Winton, is there anything you would change in the United States Constitution? Any amendments?
Uh, I'm not sure that, that this is, uh, even a part, uh, or should be constitutional. But, uh, I know that by voting, you, you have an opportunity to have term limits. And, uh, within that, you know, if we exercise those rights completely, uh, that is in existence. But I'm not sure if we're not at a point now where we need some document that enforces that, uh, throughout legislative bodies. We're 46th, the, the great state of Tennessee is, is ranked 46th in voting turnout. And, uh, when I took this challenge on, I, people told me, you're gonna need to raise $450,000 to be a viable candidate. And I, and I told that person, I said, no, I don't. I, I'd need to raise 150,000 votes and I'll be elected. And so as far as the Constitution goes, uh, I, to be honest, wouldn't know where to start to, to change it. But if, if the people saw that the need to be changed, that we could meet and talk about it and dissolve the fact that it should be changed. And if it's the desire of the American people, it's your choice to change it, not mine.
What is your view on the First Amendment in relation to religious liberty?
Well, if you'd have asked me that, uh, from age zero to 35, I would have probably said, well, just whatever it is, it is, it's okay. But there was a day I was sitting way back in the back of an old country church down in Florida. And I made a decision to just let go. And I remember walking up to the pulpit and, and, and crying like a baby. I, I don't know, I couldn't quit. But without that freedom, maybe I would have never been able to come and know Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior. I, I stand by that freedom. I stand by that wholesome, wholesome divinity of God Almighty and His, and His Holy Spirit and His Son, Jesus. And if we interrupt that, folks, we're living on dangerous ground. I, I just believe in that with all my heart. And I thank God for, for forgiving me of that sin and allowing me to be here today.
Well, I have to agree. I, I think that, uh, as the candidates earlier talked about, about religious freedom being under attack. That is very true. And similar to Mr. Winton's story, I also, uh, I, I had a neighbor I call my adoptive grandparents. And they're the ones that led me to church. Uh, I come from, my family's either Baptist or holiness, so conservative or very conservative. And that's all right. But on a summer day in July of 94, you know, I was led as well, uh, to take the sinner's prayer during vacation Bible school. And unfortunately, that lady that helped lead me, uh, in that prayer is, uh, has Alzheimer's. And, um, she's not doing very well. But in any case, um, when I was first exposed to church, though, I was brought home as a baby, uh, with my grandmother and my mom. And my grandmother took me to a church that, it's pretty rare, especially in a small town, that you find a Baptist church is half-black and half-white. So from a very young age, I got taught that everyone is human and everyone has dignity and humanity. And so with that said, um, with the, the con, when it comes to the First Amendment, the Constitution and religion, I stand up for that person who is Buddhist. I stand up for that person who is Taoist. I stand up for that person who is atheist, um, because that is our right.
So you both support religious freedom. Thank you for that. During the time of COVID in 2020, several states, notably California, New York and others, tried to limit the rights of churches to meet and gather in a church building like this and sing praises to God and hear a message preached, not just for a few weeks at a time, but some of them even months at a time. Do you believe it was President Trump's responsibility and the United States Congress to stand up to those governors and tell them they did not have a right to do these things? Or do you believe it was a states' rights issue? And if you do believe it was Congress's responsibility, what would you do to stand up for the rights of churches to continue to gather?
So having a healthcare background and not working on a master's in public health administration, I, I think about this topic, uh, with both sides of my brain, and it can be conflicting. Uh, in one sense, I don't even think it's a state's issue or a governor's issue, much less the, the Congress. Uh, it should be left up to the church. The other side of my brain says to stop a global pandemic or at least slow it down and mitigate it and protect our people, uh, with disabilities. And, you know, my mom survived, uh, having half of a lung removed. And so, uh, but that's still left up to choice, personal choice and the, and the church's choice. Um, I, I don't think that I would have voted for anything where Congress would have imposed something, though. I would have voted against it.
Government, excuse me for saying this, but sometimes get too big for its britches, okay? And sometimes we can have way too much of it. And, and one of the things that, that I'd like, again, as a candidate, I think we sometimes lose the factor of common sense. You know, my grandfather was raised up on a farm. Uh, I wasn't the sharpest knife in the drawer. Somebody told me the other day, said, your elevator doesn't go all the way up. And I said, well, I'd be informed. They don't put elevators in one-story buildings. So, but, you know, we, our church, uh, each church should have had the decision to make their own choice. Government doesn't need to be involved in who is able to gather and worship and what form you want to gather and worship. You know, we, we instituted at my church, you know, a set format. And, and we had Zoom meetings available. And, and so at the end of the day, uh, I don't think, again, that, that government should impose that on us. I would never vote to support that.
So for clarification, do you believe that Governor Newsom in California shutting churches down across the state is a states' rights issue and he did wrong? Thereby meaning President Trump had no authority to intervene in that or the Congress? Or do you think President Trump and Congress had the authority to intervene in a states' issue like that and tell the governor he cannot shut down churches?
I'll be honest, I'm, I'm not familiar with the California Constitution. I'm not sure what the governor has, has availability to do.
Okay.
I, I guess I would say that, uh, when it comes to a states' rights issue, uh, we are not California and our governor's not running California. So if California wants to impose that, then their courts and their churches can take up that constitutionality over it.
So you believe that the First Amendment only applies to Congress, not to the country as a whole? Do you understand the question?
Reframe it.
So what I, so do you believe that the First Amendment only applies to the United States? Congress shall not make an act respecting the freedom of religion? Or do you believe by saying Congress shall not, it applies to the states as well since they ratified the United States Constitution?
I think it depends on how their state constitution is written.
Okay. We'll move on to the Second Amendment. The Second Amendment says very clearly that the right to bear arms is a necessity. It says being necessary. Do you support the right to bear arms?
I do with a regulated, well-regulated militia.
Okay. So do you support the rights of citizens to bear arms or just people who are members of a militia?
Uh, I support the right for people to bear arms. The problem that remains is, the scary part is that people would, and I'm a survivor, before I say this, I'm a survivor of mental, uh, I mean of PTSD. The scary part is that people who have no records, who, uh, have mental illness, who's either not being treated, they refuse to be treated, uh, can go out right now and get a gun with no questions asked other than the waiting period. We've got to have red flag laws, may not be popular. I myself, uh, just don't think that someone, uh, with anger issues with PTSD needs to have a gun. While I was in PTSD treatment, I had a family member go to jail over shooting someone over deer meat. I guess I can't say anything more.
Mr. Winton?
I, I do support our Second Amendment rights. And, and, and I think if, at least every time I purchase a weapon, I have to go through a, a background check. You know, it goes through the computer. I have to pay the $10 for that. So there's, there's a database that should throw up a red flag if, if I'm, you know, an accused murderer or, or felon. And we have to have safety involved with that. But we, you know, we as America have fought for those freedoms, uh, war after war after war. And that didn't come cheap. And, uh, for me, I, I believe in the Second Amendment. I support the Second Amendment. And I think that I would stand in, in step again with the people that desire us to do that.
Can you explain your views on the Tenth Amendment, please?
If you tell me exactly what it is, no. It, it's a, again, America's complicated. But within the Tenth Commen, uh, Amendment, working with the states and, and allowing local bodies, like particularly local school systems and local boards, you know, I'd rather Congress not even be involved in education if that was my choice. I'd rather see you guys knowing what you know, uh, educating your children, let your teachers teach, your children learn, and, and your, and your communities flourish. But when you get into that, that fine tuning, then we get people like the, the candidate that's an attorney. And these greater minds, and we get those things involved. And it's more complicated than just to say yes or no. Because then you start beginning to get all these different entities and different people with that influx. But within the Constitution, if, if we, uh, have that embedded in our desires and that's what the American people want, uh, we want to make sure to protect those things.
So if I remember right, the Tenth Amendment is what's not enumerated in the Constitution is passed down to the states' rights. I think it's also the Ninth Amendment that, uh, what's, just because something isn't enumerated in the Constitution doesn't mean it's not necessarily a protected right. Is that correct? I do believe in states' rights, uh, uh, but too many times, whenever we see the times that the Constitution has been amended, it's really been for two reasons. It's been when politicians have abused their power and they need to be jerked back in line. Uh, the second instance is when states abuse their power. And, uh, not having equal access to education based on race, not having equal access to mental health, uh, uh, based on your jurisdiction and, uh, what, uh, services are available. Sometimes you have to take certain rights from states that abuse that power. And I, that's why I stand behind, uh, amending the Constitution and building a coalition, coalition to do so.
Do you think the Fourth Amendment of the United States Constitution forbid the taking of former President Trump's, uh, documents from his home?
I think I'm with Mr. Winton. I think I spaced on the Fourth Amendment.
Do you, Mr. Winton? Do you think the Fourth Amendment to the United States Constitution forbids the taking of President Trump's documents from his home? Being seized by?
I have to be honest with you. I, I, unless we were sitting and dissect the Fourth Amendment, I'm not sure of the verbiage. But if, if the classified documents, is that, is that what you're referencing?
Yes, sir.
That was taken? If, if those are, uh, and, and I'm not sure that's been decided yet. If those are, uh, documents that should not have been taken, then I don't see under any circumstance, whether it be, uh, former President Trump, former President Obama, uh, the right that they have. Those documents belong to the United States of America. And, and some of those documents could be a part of being able to defend our country. And I don't think that any person, uh, whether President or Congressman or Senator or, or even lobbyist, should have access to those if they're protected under that agreement.
I'll read you the Fourth Amendment, if that helps. "The right of the people to be secure in their persons, houses, papers and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation and particularly describing the place to be searched and the persons or things to be seized."
I think I'm with Mr. Winton in the fact that, uh, a good example is, uh, as a US Census worker, uh, twice now, in 2010 and 2020, I didn't have the right to keep, whenever I, I filled out someone's census documents. I didn't have the right to keep that, uh, in my home and not turn it in to my boss. And had I violated that, uh, certainly the US government would have had the absolute right to seek, uh, a search and seizure warrant, uh, through a judge, which was properly done, uh, against President Trump. And I'm with, also with Mr. Winton in the fact that it doesn't matter if it's Trump, Obama, Biden, previous Vice President, all the way back to Jimmy Carter. Uh, if, if you don't, if you take something that's not yours, the US government will come find you.
Two-part question. Do you support open borders and do you support benefits for illegal immigrants?
I do not support open borders, but with the caveat that, uh, if we think that building a physical border is going to keep out anyone, uh, we are mistaken. There are people who come here legally from China and from Asian countries, Russia, with valid visas and passports. And they are subject to human trafficking. They have those taken away from them, so they can't leave. And we don't know where they are. A physical wall, again, is not going to keep out anyone. If you don't, uh, for example, Canada has a longer border that, with us than we do with Mexico. If you don't put in infrared and motion sensor, uh, with drones to actually, uh, be able to see the entire border all at one time, you can't put enough men and pay enough money, uh, to have somebody across the entire border. And with that said, again, even if you build a physical border, they're, they're very technologically sound in the way they dig tunnels. So then if you don't put ground penetrating radar, you're still going to have people that come over. When it comes to benefits, I do believe that they, you should be a US citizen to get any sort of, uh, sort of benefit, or at least, uh, someone who has been granted asylum as a refugee.
I, I disagree totally with illegal immigration and, and open borders, simply because just the simple word illegal constitute doing something wrong. I do however, believe that our immigration policy could be made better. I believe some bureaucracy could be removed, so an individual that does want to acquire US citizenship, wants to become a member and an active member of our society, wants to be able to stand and pledge allegiance to that flag as one nation under God, indivisible, I believe there's a way you could do that. But when you have unvetted immigration coming across your border, a young lady mentioned fentanyl a while ago. Ninety percent of the fentanyl that's coming to our country today, that's a harmful, harmful drug, is coming across the border. We need, illegal action demands legal consequences. There's not any action that there's not going to be a consequence, whether it's right or wrong. And so if we don't do something, if we don't stand firm and say no, in more than just illegal immigration, we're going to continue to see that influx and, and the harmful effects of it.
Mr. Winton, do you believe that federal judges or any elected office should reflect the diverse communities of which they serve? Or do you believe that, you know, meaning that they should represent minority groups? Or should the people be allowed to choose the candidates they prefer?
That's tough. I'm pretty good at this, by the way, so. If, any position that, that's going to affect me as a citizen, I'd like to have the opportunity to have a say so. And, and I'd like to have the opportunity to vote my say so, and that's one of the things I see eroding, as I mentioned a while ago, with, with us ranking forty-sixth in the United States. But I think that if you're serving in a federal position, you're serving the people of the United States of America. And those very people should be the ones that you answer to.
I, I have, I think I maybe disagree a little bit with Mr. Winton in the fact that I don't like seeing judges heavily into politics. I really don't want to know what your politics are, I want to know that you're going to justly interpret the state constitution, the federal constitution, without fear or favor, depending on a, a political party. So with that said, I would not be for voting, personally, citizens voting for judges. In states that I have seen that, it, it becomes too politicized and you start placating to certain groups to take up money to try to win that election. And with that said as well, that the judges should reflect the diversity of the community. If, it's easy to see that we've had, I think roughly a hundred and twenty, maybe it's more than that, white Supreme Court justices. And now some complain that it's, it's more diverse now than what equals the current population. But I think five women or so, as a whole, in our nation's history as a Supreme Court judge, is not exactly indicative of diversity.
President Obama spent us into more debt than any president in history prior to him. In four years' time, President Trump spent us into more debt than any president in history prior to him in just four years. Now Joe Biden has spent us in, is about to spend us into more debt than President Trump. What would you do to cut the deficit spending and cut our budget to eliminate our deficit? And do you support stimulus packages?
I guess, I guess I would say that, coming as a person who grew up watching, I guess, the nineties as the last best decade of innocence in this country, and nine eleven to happen when I was a senior in high school, to having a, a surplus in the federal budget left over from Clinton, and I think it was a divided Congress with Republicans, to go to that, to spending money on wars with countries that didn't actually attack us on nine eleven, we didn't actually go after the perpetrators in Saudi Arabia, then to Obama spending, Trump's tax cuts, Biden's spending. The number one thing that I hear from people who are more so thirty years old to forty-five during this campaign is the debt. And the reason they don't vote is because they don't hear anything about paying down the debt. My plan would be, is that federal legalization and decriminalization of medical cannabis only should be mandatory. A five percent excise tax placed on that, and three percent exclusively has to go down to paying the debt. And write it in the bill that to overturn that three percent, you have to have two-thirds in both bodies to overturn the tax. The remaining one percent would go to mental health care, and the other remaining one percent would go to education. I believe I'm the only candidate in the race, it's not been mentioned, there are seven of us in this race, that has some type of plan of paying down the debt.
Do you, yes or no, support stimulus packages?
In extreme cases. If, if we had not spent so much money putting wars on credit cards during George W. Bush's era, we would be able to afford stimulus whenever we have a crisis like a pandemic.
So the Build Back Better Plan, you support it or?
Is Build Back Better stimulus, I haven't seen a check.
A form of one, it did not pass, but it was proposed. By President Biden.
So, so, but, so are we talking about a hypothetical that didn't pass then?
If you were in Congress, would you have voted for the Build Back Better Plan of President Biden?
Because of the lack of infrastructure and the lack of health care, yes, I would have voted for.
The first thing that we need to realize, that, that obscene number, thirty-one trillion dollars in debt, and now close to thirty-five, as I understand, there's so much waste in federal government that we could eliminate that first, that's the easy step. And that would be my first step, to be honest. Our problem is, is as an elected official, much like even in the media, I'm running as an independent. And most of the time, my name is never mentioned when they're announcing who's running for office. They'll announce the Republican nominee, they'll announce the Democrat nominee, and then there are some independents running. You see, when I get there, we'll be able to look at those numbers, we'll be able to see what the real numbers are. And once we, we find out the waste, we let you folks know what that is and we eliminate it. We take that out of the picture. And then we go from there and we see that people now understand the little bit of common sense factors that we're using, and we earn the respect of other people. We're a polarized nation from far left to far right. Our country lived in a, in a debt, a debt-free society, not because of Democrat, not because of Republican, because of nonpartisan people working with nonpartisan efforts. That's how you get things done, it's done for the people, it's not done for those other sides, okay? As far as a stimulus check, absolutely would not support that in, in any form or fashion. The problem is because when the first one went out, and I apologize if you're drawing Social Security, but your income was not affected and you got a check. Every prisoner that was in the state of Tennessee is, and I'm probably all over the United States, their income was not affected and every one of them drew a check. You're talking about waste, you're talking about deficit, when you're not responsible enough to know what you're signing and not.
We do have quite a few more questions, so maybe limit your responses if you can, if not, that's fine. Where do you stand on climate change? And do you believe that the Paris Climate Accord was an appropriate action concerning it?
You know, from, from, again, like the gentleman spoke, it's kind of like the deal with COVID. You know, my problem with COVID is I felt like I never knew the truth. I, I just, you know, everybody had this, and CNN had ten analysts, and they were all for this, and Fox had their ten, and they were all for that, and it was twenty-four hours a day. But I never felt like I really knew the truth. Not sure that I know the truth about climate change. I do know that technology is advancing, I, I'm involved in industry that are looking to expound on EV charging stations. Problem with those folks, most places we go to, the, the electric that's already there won't carry those. New service has to be put in, that doesn't run on a hundred and ten extension cord. That runs on some high, high voltage, and it's going to take a lot of power to mandate those and, and to cover it. So we got to be careful. But the thing is that, that in the climate change, our fossil fuels are going to diminish every time we use it, we know that. I grew up over in the coal mines, there's not enough coal over there in some of those mountains to start a fire. And that stuff's going to be gone. But we got to have technology to take its place. And, and, and as I see, we got to utilize every means possible, but we got to be responsible when we do it. And we got to use conservation to do it as well.
I do believe in climate change, I, I don't see the gentleman that was on the stage earlier. I think that we could compete on who's more of a recycler though, because I think it's going to be in my obituary. I can't even throw out toilet paper roll. And with that said, one of my plans would be to, and, and I know Republicans will, will say, creating another government agency, but something similar to the Peace Corps, AmeriCorps, create an environmental corps where we actually clean up what's in our ground, in our wastewater, in our streams, and especially the, the new island that we have connected to Hawaii that's just plastics floating in our waters. I do, I do believe that we have the free will, I, I know it can sound arrogant that we have the power to change climate, but God gives us free will, and that free will has, has been to take all the oil out of the ground. For that matter though, going back to what Mr. Winton said, is that renewable energy is depletable. So if we use all the lithium for the batteries, then we're going to be in another, another situation in, I don't know, fifty or a hundred years. I'd like to, like to know how long it would take to deplete that. That is why I would have voted for the Build Back Better Plan, because of the infrastructure that it will take, because our electric grid cannot handle the number of charging stations that's needed. We need charging stations at home even, so.
Thank you. Do you support the Paris, Paris Climate Accord?
Oh, yes.
Did you, Mr. Winton? Okay. Yes or no questions here really quick, we've just got a couple of minutes left. Do you believe President Obama, excuse me, President Biden has handled the Russian-Ukraine situation well? If you need a few seconds more, take it. That's a loaded question.
I don't know that I can answer that in one, one word. Because the adoptive grandparents, that was my neighbor, he, he was a war, two veteran, and he went over and voluntarily at age eighteen and laid down both legs into the Nazi soil and came back and we took care of him, the government did. And so I think, to a certain extent, yes, Biden has handled the Ukraine war well because my grandfather did not lose those legs to eighty years later having another dictator trying to walk across the European peninsula.
Okay. Would you support military intervention if he called for it, yes or no?
No, no.
Do you believe President, yes sir, do you believe President Biden has handled the situation in Ukraine appropriately?
You know, I, I kind of feel certain that President Biden has, has had some influence from other members of military and, and other members of Congress and other members of his own party. The problem I see with it is there's been an exponential amount of monies sent to that country, and, and we as a country are hurting. I hear a lot of people talk about how good the economy is, but I see a lot of people in my church that, that aren't doing so well. I, I see a lot of people paying higher dollars for gas than they've ever paid in a long time. More for milk, more for bread, and more for the necessities of life. And, and I just, my part is, if we're going to try to help a country, there's a lot of things that Ukraine has that we need, and somebody should have been at the table bartering the exchange. If, if we, if we're buying materialistic things, our farmers, for instance, next year, you guys beware, our farmers are going to see an increase in, in a demand for fertilizer. If we could have gotten the resources from Ukraine as a trade-off and says, listen, you furnish this, we'll furnish that, then maybe we did okay. But just to give it away, I don't know if it was handled correctly.
Yes or no, would you support military intervention if President Biden called for it?
I would only support it if it had harmful effects to the United States of America and its people.
Okay. Mr. Winton, yes or no, that's all we want, just a yes or no answer. Do you consider yourself pro-life?
I am pro-life.
Yes.
You are pro-life? What is your view on same-sex marriage?
It's not our neighbors' business and it's not the state's business to dictate who we marry.
Okay. Do you support same-sex marriage?
Personally, I do not, I know our Constitution does, and, and we have to live by the law, folks, that's what's the complicated part about America. That's the part that we need the right leadership, that's the part that we need the people that believe the way you believe in those roles to be able to change the things and get back to a more moral value.
Yes or no, do you believe that tax dollars should be used to pay for transgender surgeries? Yes or no, do you believe tax dollars should be used to pay for transgender surgeries?
Yes.
Okay. Concerning the issue of freedom and that of the right to choose between a vaccine or not a vaccine, yes or no, do you believe the federal government has the right to mandate a vaccine for COVID? Yes or no?
For which populations?
America.
Yes. No.
Okay. Yes or no, do you, or, yes, yes or no, do you believe our country is headed in the right direction?
No. Yes.
Okay. Just a simple answer, do you believe our rights come from God or the government?
As a citizen, the government.
I believe the scripture says, pay unto Caesar what Caesar, pay unto God what's God.
So you believe they come from God, is that what I'm understanding?
I believe our existence comes from God, I think man tries to control our, our legalistic part of it.
Your first day in Washington, if you're elected, what would you like to tackle first?
I'm going to get new curtains. This'll, I, I just had to say it. I want to take my Bible, the one I carry to church every Sunday, and I want to place it on that desk. And I want to have a word of prayer. And I want to ask God to continue to bless this country and guide us in that right direction. And if you come to that office, the first thing we're going to do is we're going to have prayer. If a lobbyist comes to that office, the first thing they're going to do is have prayer. And because if we leave that out, if we leave that guidance out of what we're trying to accomplish as a nation, we're never going to succeed.
So, Mr. Winton, what would be the first bill you would like to sponsor is what I'm trying to get at?
I, I would probably propose that when, for me, and I'll just say this and then I'll get to it, I'm sorry, it's not a short answer. I'm willing to serve ten years, okay, that's five terms as it is right now. That's all I'm going to serve. But when I come home, I'm coming back on my own income, I'm coming back on my own health care. And so I would like to propose a bill that does away with lifetime pay for a congressman that you went to serve the people. You didn't go up there. You didn't go up there to get rich. You go serve your time, and you do what you're supposed to do, and then you go home.
Mr. Steele?
The first thing I would introduce wouldn't be a bill, it would be a constitutional amendment to protect the right to your privacy for your health care decisions. The things that I have heard from Republican women on this campaign trail is that they're realizing that they're a little less pro-life than what they thought. I'm pro-life with a caveat that there are extenuating circumstances and that in the Bible, the life of a miscarriage is not worth as much as the life of the mother. If you cause a woman to miscarry, the man pays a dowry. If you cause the woman's death during the miscarriage, then you pay with your own life. Women, women are sitting silently. We have, we have Democratic women, I understand, that are very passionate about being pro-choice and all of that. But there are very quiet Republican women and conservative women that are sitting in churches, that are realizing that their daughters and granddaughters and nieces' lives are on the line. And if we have the technology, God's given us that free will for that technology. So it's not the government's business, it's not your business, it's not my business.
One last question for each of you, and we'll be finished, please. Try to keep your answers to thirty seconds or less, if you can, please. Congressman Dejar Lea served for many years now in Washington, D.C. What issue do you most disagree with him on?
Voting to keep using Russian oil.
Okay.
Probably the indecisiveness of being a true conservative.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause, please.
Let's give the candidates one more hand. We appreciate them coming. Let's give Brother Aaron Snyderly a hand, did a great job moderating. Did a wonderful job. And then let's give Brother Adam a hand. He put this thing together. We appreciate it very much. Thank you so much. And a couple of things I, I'd say, if there's things you don't agree with, go vote. Go vote. And then i- if things you don't agree with, run for office. Well, we need more Christians involved in office. Two things, go vote, run for office. We got some food. We'd love for you to just hang around and fellowship. Some of the candidates, get to talk to them, that those that didn't, I could speak, a great opportunity to get meet them. Thank you for coming. We're, we're glad to have you. I enjoyed it and liked it very much. And I hope you're more informed in how to vote and which person to vote for, according to your opinion and according to God's opinion. Thank you for coming tonight. Let's have a word of prayer, we'll thank the Lord for the food, and you please stay around and enjoy yourself tonight. Father, thank you for your goodness. Lord, thank you for America. Lord, we, we know we have our country because you have blessed. And Lord, there's no way we should have wanted the beginning. You blessed us in, you blessed us today. Thank you for that, Lord. Help us to honor you. Lord, I pray the coming days, the people would vote, that would be pleasing to you. Lord, thank you for Brother Adam, Brother Aaron Snyderly, thank you for all the candidates that came out tonight, bless our people. Thank you for the food and those prepared it for us, Lord. Father, most of all, thank you for giving us away to heaven through Jesus Christ. And Lord, we love you. Thank you for being good to us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thank you for coming tonight, folks.